Okay, aloha everyone. It is 11:01. I see that we have everybody on screen. Mahalo everyone for joining us at the Molokai Planning Commission meeting of October 9th, 2024. It is 11:01 a.m. Hawaii Standard Time. My name is Jantel Durualindo and I am the Chair of the Molokai Planning Commission, and I welcome you to today's meeting and discussion. To start off, I would just like to ask everyone to please silence noise-making devices. Ask our commission to please ensure that your camera is on at all times so we can make sure we have quorum throughout the meeting. And also, if the members of the public would like to testify on any item, you can write that in the chat to our staff or raise your hand, and staff will be able to put you on a list to testify. So before we go any further, I would just like to take roll call to ensure quorum. Commissioner Shannon Kaahanui Vice Chair is excused. Commissioner Luella Albino.
Yo, aloha ka'ako.
Aloha ana'ke. Also commissioners, please let us know where you are and if there's anyone else in the room with you.
Aloha, I'm alone in my living room.
Mahalo ana'ke. Commissioner Kanani Kala Bishajwariyo.
Good morning, I'm logging in from home, in my room alone.
Commissioner John Russell Pfeifer.
Good morning, I'm at home, all alone.
Commissioner Ke'ola Maukono Sagario.
Aloha, I'm in my room alone.
Commissioner Deborah Kelly. Commissioner Kelly, you can hear us. Can you just for the record? Let us know you're here. Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm in the office, but I have coworkers, but I have my earphones on.
Mahalo. Commissioner Ke'omailani Hanapi Hirata.
Aloha ana'ka'ko, Commissioner Ke'omailani Hanapi Hirata. I am in the Maui County Molokai District Office with my coworker and fellow Molokai Planning Commission Chair, Jantel Durualindo. I am participating on my own personal time. Mahalo.
And again, my name is Jantel Durualindo. I am the Chair of the Molokai Planning Commission, sitting in my office alongside Commissioner Hanapi Hirata on my own time and happy to be in attendance. Mahalo. Okay, so we see that we have quorum and can conduct business. Mahalo again for joining us to our community and our commissioners. One more time, we'd just like to set some ground rules and proper etiquette for this meeting. If members of the community are interested in testifying, you can do so at the beginning of the meeting, and you will have three minutes to testify in total. If you would like to wait till the item is called up, you'll have three minutes to testify after the presentation of each item that we discuss. Testimonies are limited to agenda items, and I will call for a point of order to direct us back should we stray from the agenda item and topic. Also, I would like to ask our community help us out by not speaking or staying on mute until you're called to speak. Every testifier, sorry, every member doing a presentation will be asked to swear under oath to tell the truth, so we'll go through that process as well. Like to recognize our Deputy Director Anna Lillis from the Department of Planning, our Molokai Planner, Sivu Lopez, our staffing, planning staff member, Shantel Numura, and our Preparation Council, Andrew Nelson. So very blessed to have them with us. Okay, so our first order of business is public testimony. Anyone in the community wishing to testify on any agenda item can do so at this time. Please notify our staff by either raising your hand or typing your desired testifying item on the chat, and Shantel will get you or Sivu will get you on a list. You can testify in writing by emailing the commission. You can also testify in person at the Molokai District Office or at our Maui location. You are also able to testify and join us online, and all of the information to those methods are included on our agenda for October 9th, 2024. So at this time, is there anyone wanting to testify on any agenda item?
Hi Chair, this is Jantel. I see nobody online wishing to testify.
Thank you.
Aloha Chair, this is Sivu Lopez in the Molokai Office, and there's no one here wishing to testify. Thank you.
Mahalo ladies. Okay, seeing no one here to testify, we will move on to Item B, Communications. This commission will be seeing a presentation from Vera Coschelo, biologist, project manager of the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers Honolulu District Regulatory Office on the basics of the program, including limits of jurisdiction and the permit review process, as well as advice for permit applicants. I just want to reiterate that this has been a really awesome time, and I have been really advocating for this commission to be educated and empower ourselves to know about the different organizations and overseeing departments that have petitioned or are petitioning for their input to the projects that we review on Molokai. And I think we are quickly learning how we can utilize and work better with them to protect our Ina and our people. So the Army Corps of Engineers is super important as they do oversee projects, especially, I think it's especially concerning when it has to do with coastal line projects and waterways and our water resource. So so happy to have Vera with us. And at this time, Vera, welcome to the Molokai Planning Commission. We're excited to hear your presentation. Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
All right, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Aloha mai ka'ko. Oh Vera ko'u inoa. Mahalo ke'ia hui ana. So hey everybody, thanks so much for joining today and for allowing me to present to your group. Like we just heard, I'll be presenting an overview of the Corps of Engineers Regulatory Program. So I'm gonna share my screen and hope this works. Okay, for some reason, I can no longer see the WebEx chat, so I will check the chat at the end, but if folks have questions, we can absolutely pause. Ooh, maybe if I do this, I can see it, but we can please speak up and we can pause and check in in real time. So with that, let's get started. So today I'll be talking about, I'll be starting off with the Corps regulatory scope, our mission and authorities, the Corps geographic jurisdiction, review of the permitting process and activities, an overview of consultation and compensatory mitigation. I'll touch on the Section 401 blanket and the new water quality rule, and wrap up with some keys to a good application. So in a nutshell, what do we do? We review Department of Army, so this is a part of the Corps of Engineers, permit applications for certain activities in Waters of the U.S. And I love a good Venn diagram, and I feel like this really illustrates this, almost like a two-part test, do you need a permit? So on the right-hand side, it's an activity. It's talking about the activity-based jurisdiction is what is proposed, a regulated activity. In the blue on the left, is that activity occurring within the Corps geographic-based jurisdiction, known as Waters of the U.S.? And if both of those occur, unless an exemption applies, the project will need a Corps permit. So our mission is to protect the nation's aquatic resources while allowing reasonable development through fair, flexible, and balanced permit decisions. This might look a little different than the missions of some of our other federal agencies that are solely focused on ecosystem restoration or preservation. This is a sort of balancing sustainable development and maintenance of existing infrastructure with protecting the environment. So we have three authorities, and our two main ones are Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act and Section 4 of the Clean Water Act. So under Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act, the Corps has overview, meaning like we need to review activities and issue permits for structures in and work in over or under a navigable waterway. So with the term navigable, please think tidally influenced rather than navigable in fact. So this is a more in-depth issue, we'll get into in a few minutes, but the key words for Section 10 are structures, work, and tidally influenced. The purpose of Section 10, the authority under Section 10, is to maintain navigation. Under Section 4 of the Clean Water Act, that gives the Corps the authority to regulate the discharge of dredged and/or fill material into all waters of the United States, including wetlands. And the purpose of this authority is to protect aquatic resources from Ma'aka to Makai. So when we're talking about that blue portion of the Venn diagram on the left-hand side, the Corps geographic jurisdiction and the term Waters of the U.S., what are we talking about? So there are different limits for tidally influenced systems and non-tidal systems. So starting with tidally influenced waters on the left-hand side of this diagram, under Section 404, the keyword of Section 404 is discharge, in a tidally influenced water, the limit of the Corps geographic jurisdiction is the high tideline. That's what it says in our regulations. There is no NOAA datum for the high tideline. And so for those applicants that do not have the technical expertise or can't get an onsite evaluation of where the high tideline is, we will, the Corps will accept the mean higher high watermark, that is a NOAA datum, as a proxy. So the idea being like to draw a line on project plans to show where the limits of the Corps geographic jurisdiction is relative to where the proposed project is occurring. For Section 10, this is structures and work, and we'll get into what that means in a little bit. The limits of the Corps geographic jurisdiction is the mean high water. So to recap title, Section 10, MHW, mean high water. Section 404 in a tidal system would be either high tideline or we will also accept MHW, mean higher high watermark, as a proxy for the high tideline. Moving over to the right-hand side of the figure, in non-tidal waters, so in open water, like a stream, the limits of the Corps geographic jurisdiction is the ordinary high watermark. And we can discuss this more later if folks have specific questions, but in summary of ordinary high watermark, it is not the low flow. It is not necessarily top of bank, it's probably going to be somewhere in the middle, that when there's high flow, not a hurricane, but sort of ordinary high flow, how do we, that that line sort of in between the low-flow channel and the top of bank. And then in non-tidal waters, the limits of the Corps geographic jurisdiction also include the limits of wetlands. This is a much longer conversation we can have as a follow-up if folks are interested, but in short, the Corps definition of wetlands is based on three characteristics. We're looking for wetland soils, wetland plants, and indicators of wetland hydrology. And that, that sounds like, you know, Vera, don't you just mean hydrology? And the reason we're looking for indicators is because wetlands may not always be wet. Consider how the water table can go down during the summertime. And so if you happen to be visiting a wetland in the time where it is not wet, there are other indicators that at other times it is wet, and that's the kind of stuff we're looking for. So we delineate wetlands based on the 1987 manual, supplemented with the Hawaiian Pacific Islands Regional Supplement. And I believe both of those are publicly available. So yes, onward. So the latest update. The definition of Waters of the U.S. has changed, gosh, at least now four times, five times since I started as a regulator back in the Baltimore District in 2010. So we, the results of some court cases were the, if you've been following along, Waters of the U.S. since 2010. We had the definition of Waters of the U.S. based on the Rapanos and Carabel Court cases. Then there were Waters of the U.S. definitions under the Obama Presidency, then the Trump Presidency, and now this is effectively the Waters of the U.S. rule under the Biden Presidency. And why we specify the Waters of the U.S. in the Honolulu District is because there are different parts of the country are following different definitions of Waters of the U.S. depending on whether things were rescinded based on court cases, basically. So Honolulu District are, I don't have this in the presentation, but in a nutshell, our area of responsibility includes the state of Hawaii, Guam, Senamai, American Samoa, and other outlying islands like Wake and Kingman Reef. So that's where this applies. So what this Waters of the U.S. definition is called is the January 2023 rule, effective as of September 2023. And the big change from what had come before, especially the results of the Rapanos and Carabel Court cases, is the removal of the significant nexus standard. So nexus connection, significant, important. There used to be a requirement for those waters that were like a little less obvious, like ephemeral streams, streams that only flowed 24 to 48 hours after a rainfall. How would you determine that that stream is a water of the U.S.? You would have to demonstrate that it had an important connection, a significant nexus to a tidally influenced water. So that's not a thing anymore. What we have now is, I guess what's left for Waters of the U.S. is in addition to the tidally influenced waters, we also have relatively permanent, standing or continuously flowing bodies of water forming geographic features that are described in ordinary parlance as streams, oceans, rivers, and lakes. Waters of the U.S., the current definition, also includes adjacent wetlands, meaning having a continuous surface connection to a water of the U.S. So we can do a deep dive another time, and in the meantime, here are a couple, here's the website for more information about definition of Waters of the U.S. as well as an email for the EPA, and I can share this presentation after we're done. I feel like that was a lot of information. I've got more, but do we want to pause? And does anybody have any questions at this point that we can touch on?
Do you have more on your presentation or is this kind of?
Yes. No, no, I have a lot more. I just didn't want to like anybody to hold their question and then forget it, and I can keep going, but I want to.
I actually think, I actually think you're doing really good at explaining and slowing down yourself, and we're all taking notes, so unless any commissioner has any questions right now, I think it would be good for you to just finish your whole presentation. Let us get some community input and then we can discuss with you our questions. Is that okay? Okay. Any commissioners have anything that they need, any pressing questions at this time? Okay, go ahead, continue, please.
Yes, there you go. Okay, so we talked about both sides of the Venn diagram. About, okay, if you are doing an activity that's within the Corps geographic jurisdiction and it's a regulated activity, you need a permit. What, what is a permit? What are we talking about? We have two main types, general permits and individual permits. Over 90% of what we look at falls within general permits. In the Honolulu District, we currently, the only kind of general permit we currently have are called nationwide permits. These are activities that are, that have minor impacts both individually and cumulatively, and these apply throughout the nation. There are, we've had other types of general permits in the past. We're looking into developing some in the future, and that's to cover activities that are, have minor impacts individually and cumulatively, but are not otherwise included in the nationwide permits. The form to fill out, ooh, I gotta update this. So we have an even more updated version of this form that does not say that it's expired. So that's a win. Love a form that's not expired. And I believe that's available on our website, but I can also share it as a follow-up to this meeting. And because these are minor activities with minimal impacts, our processing time is typically around 60 days from the time that we receive a complete PCN. And we'll get into all that in like a second, and what are we doing during that 60 days? So we'll touch on them in a little bit. Individual permits. So these come as two types, standard permits or letters of permission. There's a different form to fill out, and because these, gosh, okay, let me back up a little bit. Nationwide permits, so they get issued about once every five years. And then during that five-year period, activities, projects that people want to do, we review them under this, effectively it's like a programmatic agreement, this established thing. And the ALDA NIPA, National Environmental Policy Act, that requirement for a detailed federal review of impacts, et cetera, that gets done once every five years so that the, what we call the verification, for y'all, it's majority, it's just going through that permit process from your perspective, but that's why we're able to do it in a faster timeframe, because a lot of that NIPA analysis has already been done. Individual permits that are, so they don't qualify for one reason or another for the nationwide permit program, and so they require individual NIPA review. And so our processing time is about double, about 120 days. And as part of that, there's a public notice component for standard individual permits, as well as some additional, more in-depth review. So some additional information we'll need will include the adjacent property owner names and mailing addresses, and we'll need an alternatives analysis. I know that sounds kind of scary, like, well, I don't know, analysis generally can sound kind of scary, but I guess I want to really emphasize this because most often, folks have already done this and they just maybe didn't give it that name. They've considered other options and the pros and cons and tried to find the one that's best for the environment and gets the project done. And so really what we're asking is not to do something new for the alternatives analysis, but help explain all the hard work you've already done so we can document it. Okay, so you just heard me say 60 or 120 days. Vera, what are you doing during that time? What's happening? So this is our flow chart and a little orientation. The yellow is the stuff that an applicant would do. The blue and green and red is stuff that's done internally to the Corps. And the purple is Corps in consultation with other federal agencies. So let's start at the top. So a pre-application meeting, this is an optional thing, because really everything starts with the submittal of a permit application. So we've recently been, within like the last few months, been informed that we're trying to encourage people to submit, excuse me, just a draft application and then have a meeting. And I know that's like, ugh, Vera, I just, I just want to talk to you. Why do I have to send you a form in order to talk to you? And I do see that, however, I also see the perspective of some advantages of submitting this form and then having a meeting. So one is having, setting up a meeting agenda. Y'all are busy, we're busy, it's really important to have an efficient meeting. And having some of that background information that goes into an application is a really important way to have that efficient meeting. The other great thing about submitting the form is that when you do, we assign a project number. You get assigned a project manager with their name and email, so there's a human you can engage with directly. And that can also lead to, let's say, you know, Vera, I'm not sure that I need a permit. I think I do, but I'm not sure, and that's why I wanted to talk to you. Well, when you submit that form, we, if you don't need a permit, we can use that to pivot to the green box on the right-hand side. You might not need a permit for your activity, because maybe it doesn't meet one of the sides of the Venn diagram. It's not within Waters of the U.S., or it's not a regulated activity, or that asterisk bit in the middle, it's an exempt activity. We can say, yeah, you don't need a permit, you're done, and we can issue a letter to you on Corps letterhead, which is important to be able to say, we have an official agency decision. Our project does not require a Corps permit. So I'm going to imagine, use my imagination to sort of swap those two boxes up at the top, the yellow, and say, submit sort of like your best initial effort for a form, one of the two forms, whichever is appropriate to your project. And then after we meet, or after we take an initial look at that, the next step is we'll ask, we'll try to ask for as much of the additional information that we need to get to the two boxes at the bottom, hopefully issue, at one time. And if we're missing stuff or we need additional clarification based on some additional, some of that additional information that we needed, then we'll circle that up because all of this leads into those purple boxes in the middle. So what's happening is the Corps is almost serving as a translator, explaining your project. I'm saying you like the applicant, explaining the applicant's project to other agencies, mostly federal agencies. So this is circling back, required as part of compliance with NIPA, the National Environmental Policy Act, where there is some sort of federal action. In this case, at a minimum, the Corps of Engineers issuing a permit is a federal activity, and that triggers the need for these, the additional review under these other federal laws. So for Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act, there's evaluation and potentially consultation with SHIPTI, the State Historic Preservation Division. Under the Endangered Species Act, the Corps will make an effect determination and potentially consult with the National Marine Fisheries Service, they fall under NOAA, or the Fish and Wildlife Service. For the Magnuson Stevens Act, this is essential fish habitat, and we're going to get into all of these in a little bit more depth, but for that, we consult with the Natural Marine Fisheries Service. And then there's some, some kind of other that don't fit in neatly. So Section 103, this is another authority that the Corps has, and that has to do with the transport of dredged material. Like, let's say you need to clean out a harbor, and that material is like clean, and there's not really a good opportunity for beneficial reuse, but it's also very expensive to dispose of dredged material on land. And so the option that's decided is to dispose of it at the offshore dredge material disposal site. So there's, I think, five around the main Hawaiian islands. So the Corps of Engineers not just would regulate the dredging, but would also regulate the transport of that material to the offshore disposal site. So that's Section 103. Section 408, that has to do with civil works projects. So very small nutshell, Civil Works is another department of the Corps of Engineers. We both do, we'll get into some of our similarities and differences, but the bottom line is that Civil Works partners with the local sponsors, that would be the county or the state, to do a study or build a thing. So flood control structure, harbor, build a harbor and then maintain it, that kind of thing. So after it's built, the local sponsor is responsible for maintaining it to a certain standard in order to, what's the word, kind of like a warranty. If it's kept, if whatever the project that was built with the Corps, Civil Works, is kept to a certain standard, then during some sort of emergency, the Corps can. kept to a certain standard, then during some sort of emergency, the Corps can step in, Civil Works will step in and fund the restoration to that sort of maintenance baseline. And so, in the Corps regulatory, that's me, among my colleagues, when we're reviewing an application, we have to look at how might this project impact any former Corps, now local sponsor, projects? So, that's Section 408. So, that's all happening, and that happens for both the, both types of permits, the general permits, the nationwides, and the individual permits. So, we're doing this consultation. Specific to the standard individual permits, that individual NIPA review, we also have a public notice. This gets posted to our website, it's sent out to an email distribution list. If folks are interested in being added to our email distribution list, and you have a particular location, I think we have, like, if, we have different lists, like, if you want to be sent public notices for all the projects in Hawaii, or all projects in our area of review, like, you're interested in what's happening in Guam or American Samoa, or you're just focused on what's happening in Maui Newi, we have separate lists for all these things. So, I will share the email that you can send your email to and say, please add me to this list. Yeah, so that's another component of what's happening during that, in the case of a standard permit, a hundred and twenty day review. While all that's going on, we're going to pivot to the left-hand side of this figure and the two yellow boxes. For over ninety percent of our projects, these things happen automatically, and most applicants don't have to worry about them. Which, if you've been following permitting stuff pre-2021, especially that water quality cert, that is a big deal, that is a big deal. It was a huge thing, I think, in 2021, that we have what's now called a blanket water quality cert. So, when I say don't have to worry about it, we're still complying with the relevant laws for these two state agencies, the Department of Health and DBET, or the OPSD, the Office of Planning and Sustainable Development, the CZM program there. But because we, I guess, kind of like preloaded, we talk with both these agencies in that every five years when we issue the nationwide permits, and we've also had that separate conversation about the blanket water quality cert, which I'll touch on a little bit later. But basically, since we've already discussed potential impacts and any relevant conditions for follow-up, that means that when you apply for a nation, many of the nationwide permits, assuming the project's able to comply with the terms and conditions, your Corps permit, your nationwide verification, your permit, comes with, I think, a delicious side of your water quality cert and CZM authorization, meaning you don't have to go to these state agencies. So, I think this, this is a great example of where I would like to see us continue to head in this vein of doing business faster while maintaining the integrity of the process. So, very exciting stuff. That last yellow box in the bottom-left corner basically is saying that the Corps permit does not mean that you don't also have to get whatever other relevant state or local permits that you need, so like a grading permit, or a SCAP, or SMA something. I'm still new at learning about this, too. And the reason I've got a little dotted line circling back up to the permit application is because sometimes we're asked by those state or local agencies to comment on these projects, and that's how we find out about them. And we write back and say something like, well, usually, it's either, yeah, they're going to need a Corps permit, no, they don't need a Corps permit, or we don't have enough information, but maybe tell them to reach out to us. So, those are kind of the three types of responses, and that's how we find out about it. So, all of this leading to the Corps permit determination in the blue box toward the bottom. So, the end game is we either issue a permit or deny a permit. We almost never deny a permit. That's not to say that we're rubber-stamping things. I mean, as you've been with me through these last few minutes, going through this process, this is a complicated, rigorous process that's designed to catch aspects of projects that are not, in which impacts to the environment could be further minimized, and impacts to other important resources could be further minimized. So, it's more likely that projects that are not, not as minimized as they could be, it's more likely that they would get, the application would get withdrawn. We ask for information, it's not being provided, and so, and maybe I should define that. So, withdrawal is a pause on our review. It's not a punishment, it's not a denial, it is just so in our records, it doesn't show like we're working on something, where instead, we're just waiting for additional information. So, we can notify you, hey, we're withdrawing your application, and we'll hit play again, we're pushing pause, and we'll hit play as soon as we receive that additional information. So, yeah, so it mostly leads in the decision to issue a permit. So, some examples of like, okay, we talked about the yellow bit, the regulated activity, what are we, and your two authorities, Section 10 and Section 404. So, what are some examples of that yellow part of the Venn diagram on each? So, under Section 10, and remember, the key terms for this are structures, work, tidally influenced. And there they are at the top. So, what are we talking about with work? Work, most often, we're seeing is dredging. Some structures, and then the work to install them include dock or pier installation or repair, some temporary structural construction BNP, so what, maybe the activity itself isn't regulated, but maybe you need to install some structures in order to do that activity. As well as, oh, this is sort of like, almost like a trick question kind of a thing, utility line installation or repair over or under a Section 10 water. And you're like, Vera, you're not touching the water. I don't, why, what are you doing? So, this is to make sure for the over the water, that vessels are not getting like clotheslined, so to speak, or that they're not running into the utility line and damaging it. And then for under the water, even if you're not touching it, your HDD, horizontal directional drill at a tidally influenced stream mouth. The reason that we are regulating this is, let's say, the plan is to clear out that stream mouth or dredge for some reason, it's important to know where these utility lines are so that that dredge activity doesn't rip them out. Same thing for, oh, and another really good example is broadband cables. There's a lot of that coming, coming out soon, and so, yeah, to make sure there's not some sort of conflict with dredging. That's something we regulate. Section 404. So, key terms with Section 404 are fill, discharge of fill, and all waters of the United States. And there those are at the top. So, when we're talking about discharge of fill, what does that mean? We're talking about grading, grubbing. So, that's using some, typically some sort of heavy equipment to chew up kind of the soil surface, to make it flat, to make it deeper. And that also includes, excuse me, when it's being done temporarily. So, then it also can include like an access road. Let's say you're putting in a temporary access road to get a project done, you're going to restore the area when it's done, that might still be a discharge of fill. The other term that's used in addition to grading and grubbing is mechanized land clearing. So, for ecosystem restoration, the removal of mangrove roots, because, boy, are those things stubborn. And so, to really get them out, sometimes that requires root removal, and that might involve the discharge of fill, which is not to say no, or that it's bad, it just requires some oversight. And so, we, yeah, that's part of the activities that we regulate. Also, fill BMWs, we're going to touch on this a little bit, but let's say you need to do some work in the dry, so it can't be wet in this part of a stream. A great example is like a bridge footer. You need to repair this bridge footer, and in order to do it, the area needs to be dry. And so, you're placing sandbags around to isolate the work area. Sandbags are a discharge of fill, that's a regulated activity in itself, and that requires a Corps permit. Specific to fish ponds, I guess the best example is if the plan is to expand the walls beyond the original design, because sometimes you need to do that. You've got larger equipment that you need, you're changing the purpose of how the fish pond being used, you're changing operations, which, of course, modern day, climate change, sometimes things need to change. And so, expanding those beyond the original design, again, it's not bad, it's just a regulated activity. Speaking of climate change, erosion protection along a shoreline, so like a revetment, or along stream banks, usually there's some sort of discharge of fill, rocks to protect it. That's a discharge of fill, it's a regulated activity under Section 404. I mentioned ecosystem restoration, residential or industrial development, so the area needs to be graded for whatever related to creating buildings, infrastructure for residential or industrial use. Ooh, okay. So, we talked about utility lines over a tidally influenced water, or under a tidally influenced water, going through them, which I feel like is much more common. So, an underground utility line going through a wetland. Open trench, meaning you scoop out material and put the line in, and then put the material back over it, is typically cheaper than horizontal directional drill, so of course, it's more common. Removing that material and putting it right back on top of the utility line is a discharge of fill. Again, it's not bad, it's not an automatic denial and can't happen, it's just an activity that we regulate and would require a permit. And then I mentioned road and bridge repair. So, sometimes bridges will get damaged following a storm event, I think that's probably the most common thing we see. Yeah, a lot of what we see is maintenance of existing infrastructure, which is important. We need safe places to drive and to convey our goods. And so, some of that repair may require a Corps permit, because it might involve the discharge of fill. So, when we're talking about the definition of fill, I keep using this word, what are we talking about? We are talking about rock, gravel or riprap, sand, soil. I already mentioned rock, but it was so important, I said it twice. Concrete and soil, I guess I really meant soil, sorry about that. And where we're talking, where this comes from, this definition, if you really enjoy reading the Code of Federal Regulations, this is located in 33 CFR 323.2 E2. So, it's important that we understand this definition, and sorry again about the devil words, because there's things that it does not include. Sometimes we'll get calls about, I saw my neighbor pouring something in the stream. I saw someone dumping rubbish in the stream. We are not saying these are good things, these are just outside the limits of what we regulate. And so, we would then refer these calls, or try and talk to people in advance like this, and be like, hey, this is more of a question for the Department of Health or the EPA, that may fall under their authority. So, when we're talking about the definition of fill, there's kind of a two-part test in our regulations. And so, fill would either replace a water of the US with dry land, so a good example of that would be a concrete slab for a house. It used to be, this portion of it used to be a wetland, and now it's a concrete slab, it's not a wetland anymore. So, that is the replacement with dry land, or changing the bottom elevation of a water of the US. So, the example is the stream restoration project, photo on the right-hand side, this, some of those, where those cross veins are, those rocks that are going across the channel, that used to be natural channel bottom, now it's rock, it's a change, and it's raised the elevation. This is not a bad thing, it's a good thing in this case, but it still is an activity that we regulate. And more examples of the discharge of fill are located in our regulations at 33 CFR 323.2 F. So, another question we get is, what is the minimum impact size or volume? Like, do you have some sort of threshold below which you don't need a Corps permit? And sadly, the answer is, there is no minimum. It's withdrawn right now because they're working on some other stuff, but I am reviewing an activity that involves a discharge of like one cubic yard of fill. We talked about it, we tried to look at some other option, and sadly, that we couldn't come up with anything else. So, we are looking at something that minimal. Another example, or how common this is, is that there's a nationwide activity, Nationwide 18, the impact limit, meaning you cannot exceed this, is twenty-five cubic yards of fill discharged. So, even for some of these minor activities, a Corps permit may still be required. Okay. So, we've gone through the Corps process, we issue a permit, and then what? What happens? So, for some more complex projects, especially where we, the folks we've been talking to to go through the permit process are different than the people actually doing the construction, it may be helpful to have what's called a pre-construction meeting. And that might, so that's sometimes an optional thing, that like the applicant might call to be like, hey, I hired these guys to get the permit, I hired these other guys to construct the permit, I don't know what's going on, Corps, you helped clear this up, and make sure everybody's reading off the same sheet of music, so to speak. There's other projects where we kind of foresee this happening, and we might require a pre-construction meeting to happen in the permit special conditions, and it's usually specified that it needs to happen either within a certain number of days after the permit is issued, or a certain number of days before work starts. And all of this is to try and capture any, well, I'll start with the bullet on the left, pre-construction meeting, what are we doing? We're reviewing the permit terms and conditions, like avoidance and minimization measures related to the Endangered Species Act consultation, best management practices, and if there's anything, we're like, hey, Vera, this is just not going to work. I know that the people doing, that made the, helped you go through the permit process, they said we were going to do it this way, but I'm telling you, I cannot drive my excavator that way. This will not work. This is, that's why this is such a great opportunity to identify any permit modifications that might be needed before we've got equipment out on site, because that's where things get really expensive and everyone gets really stressed. So, it's really good to have these conversations before we have equipment out on site. So, let's say, maybe we have that meeting, maybe the permit applicant, the permit is, the activity is simple, and the additional, maybe there's no special conditions, blah, 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 and so, we move into, the activity gets constructed. Within thirty days of completion of construction, we ask for a compliance certification to be submitted. So, this is a one-page sheet that's attached to a permit that says, we're done, love the perma-tee. And so, they sign, I mean, it doesn't actually say love, but it just says, we're done, and whoever has the permit, now we call them the perma-tee, used to be the applicant, now they're the perma-tee, they sign their name, and they date it, and they send it to us via email, there's instructions in the letter of where to send it, and that's a reminder to us to do the compliance, sort of, compliance inspection. And so, typically, compliance inspections are done when construction is complete, so we can see the final product, what has been put in there, does it match what we said. Sometimes, we go out while construction is ongoing, usually in coordination with the applicant, to confirm that whatever folks said was going to happen during construction, like best management practices, or compliance with the recommendations of those resource agencies in that purple part of the flow chart, like, hey, when you're doing this, make sure you don't punch a turtle, make sure that you check for ESA-listed water birds while you're doing this. So, sometimes we go out while construction is ongoing to check on how compliance with those requirements is going. So, then, we move into the green box, second from the bottom, the compliance inspection. We go out, we coordinate with whoever is in charge of the project, we go out, we take a look, and we check to see, does this match with the permit said, both in the work description and in the plans? If it doesn't, then we move like, hey, this permit is not in compliance. And so, then, that's a good opportunity to check in and be like, okay, what do we need to make sure these two things match? I think it's important at this point to say, with permits, it's kind, it's like permission, so it, I guess, a silly example I give, is a permit might give you permission to eat five cookies. If you choose to only eat three, that's on you, that's fine, you cannot eat more than five. So, it's really, the permit is showing an upper limit of impact. And so, if it's, when it comes to non-compliance, that's mainly like, did you exceed that upper limit? And because there's so many opportunities to check in during the permit review process, and with the pre-construction meeting, luckily, we rarely have non-compliance issues. Folks are really great at staying in touch, and we include that maximum impact limit in the permit, and so, non-compliance And so non-compliance, this rarely happens. And so normally what happens is we say, it looks gorgeous, congratulations, you're all done with us, see you next time. And we send a letter saying, yes, you're in compliance, you're good. If, even more rarely, if things for non-compliance go sour, then there is the opportunity, um, for the Core to exert enforcement authority. So we try to resolve things at the lowest level possible, um, like that arrow that goes back up to the pre-construction meeting, but ultimately, if things cannot be resolved at a lower level, the Core can refer, um, projects to the EPA for civil or criminal penalties. So that sounds scary. Luckily, we almost never get there and we're able to resolve things using, um, good communication and good relationships. Everybody's favorite easy button, when do you not need a permit? Tell me about that green box where I get a letter that says, no permit required. Okay. So there's really three main times where a permit is not required. Going back to that Venn diagram, activities in uplands that are not in waters of the US, that's outside the limits of the Core's geographic jurisdiction, that blue part of the Venn diagram, you don't need a permit. Sometimes there's activities that are not regulated. So that's the yellow part of the Venn diagram. If the activity isn't regulated, and we'll get into some of that in a minute, then you don't need a permit. And then there's that asterisk in the middle about exemptions, and we'll touch on that as well. Non-regulated activities. So remember with section ten, our key words were structures, work, and tidally influenced. However, structures in non-tidal waters, where we only regulate the discharge of fill, structures are not a regulated activity. So we get a lot of questions, um, on the island of Oahu. And I anticipate it's going to come on the neighbor islands as well, but when it comes to sampling streams regarding stormwater. Um, because under a different part of the Clean Water Act, the local governments are required to make sure the water moving from the land to the ocean is clean. And so how do they do that? They start by developing some sort of baseline with sampling. How clean or not clean is the water? How is, if it's not clean, what, like what aspect of it is unclean? And then how do we fix that? And then they'll put in a fix and then they'll check it afterwards. All of that includes lots of monitoring equipment, like the picture in the upper right-hand corner, where there's like a pipe going from a machine, uh, on the bank and the pipe goes into the water. So pipes, loggers, scaffolding, weirs, um, these are generally structures and are not a regulated activity in non-tidal waters. So if, um, something that we're trying to do with different, um, a lot of like, local government, they, they have these types of projects. And so something we're, we're working on, um, into the future is to write all these down, rather than every time they have this activity, having to check with us. We're trying to develop, I guess, kind of like a cheat sheet, where we write down the most common types of activities and explain which ones are regulated and which ones aren't. So if you're like, I, I don't exactly, I do have this problem, I'd love a cheat sheet like that, or I have a different activity that we do all the time and I would love to have something, it's not this, but I'd love to have something else from the Corps of Engineers saying, no, we don't regulate this. Love, Vera. That's something that we can work on as a follow-up. Bridges are another kind of trick question, weird situation. So, okay, bridge, it's a structure. Um, the scaffolding to do the bridge, that's usually a structure too. Construction and maintenance. So like we just saw above, structures in non-tidal waters are not, it's not a regulated activity. But what about over a section ten water? Let's say the tidally influenced mouth of a stream. That's the trick question bit, because, this is at the bottom of the page in the text, um, the Corps of Engineers has a memorandum of agreement with the US Coast Guard in tidal waters, where we say, um, you don't need a permit from us, maybe you need something from the Coast Guard. Since they're, we're focused on navigation, they're focused on vessels, for the most part, they're not interested either. And so it ultimately ends up that you don't need a permit for anything regarding bridges, except for the discharge of fill. So that might be, um, like in this bridge project down below, let's say they had to, um, protect the bank more and add more rock around the footers. Rock is a type of fill, they're placing, it's a discharge of fill, um, in a water of the US, so it's a regulated activity in a water of the US, and that does require a permit. More non-regulated activities. So when we think section ten, we think structures, work, tidally influenced.
Hey Vera, do you have, uh, do you have a lot more slides to go?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe, can you summarize all of that stuff to give our commissioners time to like ask some questions and? I mean, we're kind of going on an hour, so who, just wondering if maybe we can get you to summarize some important, okay, thanks.
Yeah, let me, so I'm going to skip through these pretty quick, but I'm going to share this exact presentation and, um, let's see if there's other important things to hit on. So there's more examples of non-regulated activities, um, and like, so we don't regulate vessels, um, there's also exemptions. And sort of the bottom line with exemptions is there cannot be a change to the character, size, or scope. So it basically has to be same, same, before and after. Um, emergency projects, this is a really common question. Uh, even if there's a governor's declaration of emergency that may waive state requirements, it doesn't waive the federal requirements. And so that's something that we can talk about in more detail if you have specific emergency-related questions. We touched on civil works a little bit, and this is more detail about the purple part in the middle of that footprint, uh, footprint, sorry, middle of the flow chart. So what exactly are we talking about with endangered species and essential fish habitat? That's mostly for, for us to worry about, so we will, at the beginning of that flow chart, we will ask questions that we, to get the information we need to go into that purple part. So like I mentioned, that involves Endangered Species Act, Essential Fish Habitat, Section one oh six, the National Historic Preservation Act. Something important to mention here is that, um, we have, so let's say, um, someone, uh, like the, the county government is the applicant and they already have a private consulting firm on board to do the six E eight process. It doesn't necessarily make sense for the Core to do the section one oh six, the federal level process, when the state and federal process are about the same historic property and are effectively going through like, this is the property, here are the limits, here's how we are going to protect it. So we have the option to designate the third party, so that would be the county and then delegated down to the consulting firm, to do one oh six at the same time. It ends up being not too much of an additional burden, it's the same technical information, just with some additional vocabulary. So that is something that we are trying to encourage as a, an efficiency. Um, there's other specific, specific information we need for federally funded projects. Basically the gist is, they do the purple part in the middle of the flow chart and we need to see documentation on both ends of the purple part. So we are trying to be efficient, um, while still maintaining the integrity of the process. So some examples, here are some examples of that, and the bolded one I already mentioned is the blanket water quality cert. And that is a awesome, high five, great thing that we have going on. Compensatory mitigation. So in a nutshell, underneath, uh, the process is, we first start to try and avoid impacts to the waters of the US and impacts the environment, so ideally do no harm. If there, if it must be done, because you have to do the project, then can the harm somehow be minimized? Can things be reconfigured? And if that can't happen and there's still impacts, permanent impacts of waters of the US or loss, then we may look at requiring compensatory mitigation. How do we make up for that loss? So this is more about that process. Um, like I mentioned, over ninety percent of the projects that we are looking at fall under the blanket water quality cert. For those that don't, we can talk probably at another time, more in depth about what does that individual water quality cert process look like? And that is through the State of Hawaii Department of Health Clean Water Branch. So some keys to a good application. For starters, I would say, um, a summary is the five Ws. Who, what, when, where, why, and that other sneaky W of, wow. So what are you planning to do? Who, who is it that is trying to do this? Um, where are you doing this? Both the location and relative to waters of the US. Um, when are you planning to do this? Why? What is the project purpose? And how? What is the, uh, construction methodology? So to tell us that and then to show us that in the project figures. And that's what I got. So here is our contact information. I'm also going to remember to send along not just this presentation, but also our, um, our application and a copy of our brochure that has this, um, this is our main email address, so that, that our chief checks this multiple times a day and this is where applications get submitted to, um, because we're mostly paperless. And so what's great about this is it's not just our chief, let's say our chief goes on vacation, the, the acting chief also checks this. So even if, let's say you've worked with an, uh, a regulator, somebody in the, on the office in the past and they moved on, because like with a lot of things, there's a lot of turnover, this email remains the same. You are always going to reach somebody with this email. The phone number is our main office phone number, somebody's always assigned to review that, but it's always nice to kind of have a paper trail and that's why that main email is great. And then above is our website, where we try to put out, um, updates and ha, ha, share all the tools that folks need in order to go through this process. So sorry for taking so much time and thank you so much for your attention and your patience.
Thank you, Vera. Um, okay, uh, when we stop sharing screens so I can see our commissioners. Okay, commissioners, um, let me just open up for, uh, actually, let's, let's open up for questions from our commission. Any commissioners have questions? And we want to welcome Vice Chair Khanui, um, to the meeting. Anyone have questions?
I'm talking about myself, so, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Kelly.
Um, I only have two short questions. Well, no, one request. I know you're going to send out your PowerPoint and application and whatever, so will each commissioner have access to it? That's, so I don't know if that's staff or whatever, because I'd like to have the actual PowerPoint also. But, um, one of the-
Hi Chair, this is, um, Chantel.
Yes, yes.
I did email the commissioners a copy of the presentation.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Um, my first question. If there's a project and they're, um, trenching, it's not in the jurisdiction, but if they hit the water table, does that affect anything?
Mostly no. So we don't regulate groundwater, we're focused on surface water. The only bummer with that is, um, an example on the Big Island, they were close to the coast, they did open trenching and then had to stop the project for some other reason. By the time we came on the scene, those holes were almost like anguine pools. They rose and fell with the tide. And so we did have to regulate that. So I would say in areas where the water table is shallow, do your best to make sure, and you're outside the waters of the US, do your best to make sure the project moves along at a, at a rapid pace, so you don't get into a situation like that. Great question.
Okay. Um, and the other thing was, you mentioned that there was, um, authorized offsites for removed, uh, material. Do we have one on Molokai?
Hmm. I know there's one op, so you're talking about the EPA offshore dredge material disposal sites.
Okay.
I don't have the locations memorized and I, I, but I can find a figure and send that along as well.
Okay. Um, yep, that's my questions. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Hanapi Hirata.
Um, aloha, mahalo for the presentation. Um, to make this a little bit more, let's see, so this is the Molokai Planning Commission. Do you know of any wetlands violations on Molokai that you could reference or share? Um, any kind of content? Anything, maybe outcomes of it, or, um, is there something you can do?
Yeah, I would need to dig into it a little more. Um, before this presentation, I, I did sort of a quick search of projects, um, mostly those, uh, free application discussions, um, projects we had reviewed, and I think there were some unauthorized activities in the past for Molokai. And that's where I got like the most common work types that we'd seen, utility lines, roads and bridges, like the most common work types that we've seen, utility line, pond restoration, um, moorings offshore, um, and where am I going with that? So I'm not aware of any unauthorized actions that are active right now. Are you interested in ones that happened in the past?
Um, well, I just was looking at more of showing us perhaps what violations would look like and then what you guys, the outcomes were from those types of, um, wetland violations. Um, but no, that's okay. Um, uh, I have another question, um.
Yeah, well, just to wrap that question about violations up, I, I think that's something that we could follow up with, um, yeah. Is somebody else taking notes? Because I'm, I'm not remembering all the things. Okay, somebody else is taking notes, so I can remember to dig in and almost give like a, a mini version of this, sort of talking about violations in general, maybe some examples, and how, what are the options for like, how those get resolved and what the EPA's legal action kind of looks like? Would that answer the question?
Uh, yeah, yeah, we can always send it to, um, Chantel or something, or planning and they can send it to us. Um, I just was hoping that you had something. So, um, do you guys implement violations and what does your type of violations look like? Like, do they have to pay fines and fees? Um, like, any of that?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, so there may be civil or, um, I would say the civil penalties are the most common ones if a violation gets referred to the EPA. And that can involve fines. And so that's something I don't have at the tips of my finger, so to speak, as far as like, what do those fines look like? How much per day? What does that mean? Um, which I think is kind of a good thing, because for the most part, we're able to do outreach, so people are not doing things without permits and, or, um, though, but, and same thing for non-compliance, that most of the time we're able to resolve it and bring things back into compliance. So before we get to the point of civil penalties, um, a lot of times we'll offer people the opportunity to restore an area, so if a wetland was filled, because a lot of times people didn't know we existed, which is why outreach like this is so important. And so they're like, oh, I'm so sorry, I didn't know that we can't fill this wetland without a permit. And either they restore it, or if the project is like, super necessary, like, I need this in order to get to my home, um, this low water Ford crossing, then there are some opportunities for us to review projects after the fact. We really don't want to punish people for ignorance, but we do document when we engage with folks. So if we've had this conversation and then they're kind of pretending that they never spoke to us, we, we have documentation to that effect and we can say, you were, you were know, the terms are knowing and flagrant. Um, and that would be more likely to go on to referral to the EPA. Did I answer that question correctly? Or, or fully? I'm seeing head nods of, that's not-
Uh, you answered the question, yeah, some of it. So say for instance, someone is vi, has a violation in a, um, in a fish pond, which is not a wetland. Um, so local EOs are not wetlands. But, um, so say someone does a violation in a fish pond and you just said, if you folks come in and find that, yes, they did a violation, um, and then you tell them they have to restore it back to what it was, what does that process look like to restore? I mean, who makes that decision and how involved are you- And how involved are you folks in that process of saying, we're gonna have somebody here on the site? We're gonna watch what you folks do? And but if you don't have data to show what that place looked like before, then what is really your definition of restoring it?
Great question. We rarely see this in the context of fish ponds. Because generally, so first of all, fish ponds are likely going to be waters of the US. They're more likely to be in open water. So along the shoreline, they'd be considered like a traditionally navigable water. They rise and fall with the tide. A more inland fish pond might be part of a tributary, like an impounded tributary. So that's the blue side. And then assuming the activity is a regulated activity, the yellow side of the Venn diagram. Like I said, hopefully, it's just a matter of like, hey, Corps, our bad, we didn't know you existed. And we're like, okay, that's fine. This activity would have been covered under a minor type of permit anyway. The most common type of permit we review under the nationwide is for three for maintenance. And so the idea is to maintain this fish pond. Or another one we have for ecosystem restoration, nationwide 27, that's another option. And so we can do after the fact authorization. Meaning you've done the work and we are going to say that this is, this is permission to have done this work, specifically this work description within this timeframe. And moving, so an example of how this has worked has been not for fish ponds, but for dock installation. There's a big dock marina type community on the island of Oahu. And there was some sort of communication gap where they somehow forgot we existed for a bunch of years. And we reconnected with them. Because like there's personnel turnover, right? Somebody new comes in, doesn't know the Corps exists. And so we were able to do after the fact authorization for those activities that they had done. And like didn't know they needed authorization as well as all, a bunch of their future activities. So we wrapped them both into one permit. So when it comes to what restoration looks like, specific to a, so, okay, for like a wetland, I think we would be looking, we would ask for input about like, how do we know what came before? So maybe aerial photos or input from the practitioners or looking at what's called a similarly situated. So is there a wetland at about the same elevation? Other same conditions that was not impacted? And how is, if it makes sense, how can we make it look like that? Or if we have photos from before? So I guess I'm like, because this so rarely happens for a fish pond, it's much more likely that we would do an after the fact authorization. That I don't have like specific criteria of what we would look like for restoration of a fish pond beyond what the fish pond practitioners already envision for restoration that they're already working on. I also see Ms. Albino. So I, I see from like facial expressions that maybe I didn't quite answer the question. But I, I want to touch on Ms. Albino's question. Maybe we can come back to the fish pond example.
Hang on one second. Commissioner Hirata, you done?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna stop at my questions. But it, it would have been really exciting because on Molokai, there's been a lot of different case law studies that have come, come down and not just case laws, wetland violations, fish pond violations in the past history on this island that really went open up what really it looks like to violate in the Clean Water Act and different stuff. So shocks, I was super excited for you to at least show our people on this panel, us as the Molokai Planning Commission. What, your presentation was good, but actually bringing it down to our island and different things that have happened on our island. But thank you. I'm not gonna ask you any more questions, even though I get like seven over here. I realize that I'm not gonna ask you those questions. But mahalo.
Yeah, no, thank you so much for bringing that up.
Aloha, mahalo for your presentation. I thought that was really good, broad information for us to, to look into and study. But I have a question about a recent, and I guess this is overall in Hawaii. You know, the erosion of, of sand from waters. You know, on Oahu, this is in the news. And I'm thinking, how will that be remediated? And you said previously, you know, people who build on that kind of area, knowing it's high wave and, and erosion has already happened over a period of time. How does the agency approach that? In that situation, when they're there already, you know?
So Chair Albino, are you referring to like the Sunset Beach North Shore part of Oahu?
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't identify the area. But you see houses being, you know, falling into the ocean due to the big wave action. And we have no indicator as to how high the waves are gonna come. At certain time, we know sea level is rising. What do those people do in a situation like this? Is there responsibility on their part? Or is it something that is mediated through this system?
Great question. Yeah, so specific to the houses and specific to the Corps' review. We, we can, the, the, the limits of what we can authorize are pretty broad. And so there's not anything specifically prohibiting the Corps from issuing a permit for people wanting to protect their homes, even if there were projections of high waves in that location. And, and so it's like a situation of kind of caveat emptor. Like, maybe you should have known before you built your home here. That being said, that little yellow box in the lower left hand corner of the flow chart, we're not the only regulatory game in town. And Office of Conservation and Coastal Lands, OCCL at the state, they do have prohibitions against the discharge of fill or building new things in certain environments. And so even if the Corps were to be like, okay, we issue a permit for you to protect your house, they still may not receive permission from other agencies. And like I mentioned, a Corps permit does not absolve applicants from needing to get whatever other permissions they need from the other local or state regulatory authorities.
Thank you, because I, I, I think that's happening on Molokai too. Although in a more slow type of action, receding, you know, the waters are coming closer on a fish pond. There's a home that was built there years ago. And I'm sure that was something they were aware of. And so now when the high kinkais come in, it goes right under their house. And so, you know, being that's on Oahu with the receding land and they're trying to fill it up. And to me, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's something that you should have thought about before, way before. But then they're expecting the state to now give them land, extra land, moving away from the shoreline. So we gotta look at that, even on Molokai, on a salt shore. Because that's happening. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Commissioner Albino. Any other commissioner has any questions? Okay. You have one, Kealamaunau, you good? Okay, I, I have just a couple. Actually, I have a lot, but I'll, I'll limit mine to a couple of questions. What does the Army Corps of Engineers do when Shipti has no comment? Because it's an after the fact project. And do you have other protocols to ensure the cultural protection of our Evi Kupuna and our water resource? And then I guess along with that, when you make these determinations, do you have a, a solidified set of rules that are cohesive and enhance community plans? Or, or specific like water laws in Hawaii? And, and as you go forward and find the glitches and, and the not cohesive parts, is there a maintenance plan to those kinds of communications and, and work partnerships?
Commissioner Lindo, thank you so much. That's such a great question. And I, I, as I'm, as I'm hearing that, I'm also thinking about Commissioner Hirata's question. And, and sort of request for more Molokai specific information and analysis. And so I don't want to make, let, let perfect be the enemy of good. Like, like I've heard this is a sort of helpful initial overview. And it might be helpful to have some sort of follow up discussion, either in this venue or in a separate virtual meeting to, to dig into Molokai's specific issues. So that is absolutely something that we can do at a, at a later time.
Can I, to help you with your response, to help you with your response? Because I understand kind of what you mean. I think what this board is interested in is getting your expert opinion and input on how we can effectively review projects. And not in objection to, but, but utilizing your agency and your skillset in a way that is complementary to our commission's objective to protect ouraina and our people and our future. And so I guess when we asking you the question, it's, it's more, it's more kind of, help us figure out the little pockets of maybe things that we haven't put in place yet. And how this commission can understand the process of decision-making authority and enforcement so that we can better review projects that include your jurisdiction.
I love that. That is something that we are slowly working on. But what a concept, government agencies talking to each other, right? So trying to minimize redundancy and look for opportunities for efficiency. If this is something that the Corps is going to focus on, then we can focus on something else and let them be the experts in this specific thing. Or the Corps, we are, we maybe don't have limitations on this, but OCCL does. So maybe that's the, the area of focus. So specific to your, so, so I guess specific to how we can better align our reviews. I, I'm into it. I think that might be a little bit of a, a longer conversation. Because I also need to understand better what you guys are looking for. It sounds like you have more of a mission of preservation and protection and restoration as opposed to like the, the sort of dual mission that the, the Corps has. And that, that's cool. I think that's normal for some, a lot of the other agencies that we work with. So yeah, I look forward to more discussions about how we can better align our reviews. Specific to your.
Oh, go ahead.
Pin the needles. Your first question about Shipti, and there's no comment. So we are still, there, there is a requirement under Section 106 of the National Historic Preservation Act to consult with native Hawaiian organizations. Which projects that happens on? How we can be more effective other than sending letters to those native Hawaiian organizations that are listed in the Department of Interior listing? The, the how we do that is, I would say, at, infancy does not sound great, but we're still at a very formative stage. Lots of opportunity to shape how that looks. So if y'all have specific thoughts about like, hey, here in Molokai, here's who we need to talk to. Here's how we'd like to be engaged with. A conversation I had yesterday with some folks in the Big Island had to do with knowledge management. Here's what we told you before about a similar project. We'd like to know that you heard us last time. So how are you providing that feedback loop of demonstrating that you were listening? What are the opportunities for incorporating this feedback into a project? And what are things that are beyond the Corps' authority to require incorporation, but might be within another agency's authority? So I guess the answer is, yes, there's a process. Exactly what that looks like, to be determined, hopefully in coordination with this board.
Thank you, thank you so much for that, for that answer. I just have two more questions. One, under the new definition of the water, what do you call it? The.
Waters of the US.
Of you, the waters of the US. What about previously known or unknown permanent water sources? So like, you talked about it being specific to permanent water sources. But as in the case of Waikiki, Lahaina and other areas in our state, diversion of natural waterways and permanent waterways was, was something that was broadly done, paved over. Previously, permanent wetlands were redistributed out and are now dry. So get evidence, but all asphalt and road and buildings all over. So now, as we experience climate change, sea level rise, all those things, and our, and our world, our conditions are changing in the world. We're finding that what was previously permanent waterways are now coming back into areas that they weren't for a number of years. How does the new definition affect those kinds of situations? And is it a long drawn out process? And, and the reason I'm asking is, when we reviewing one project and somebody says, you're not, there are no significant impacts to water. And then we're like, get Moolelo that, that used to be an entire wetlands over there. And then people are like, what? But you know what? Get buildings there. And so Shipti can't make a determination because already done. And so what are you gonna do about that? But we noticed that now water is coming back in that area and going that way. How, in this new definition of how, how your, your organization determines permanent waterways? What about that circumstance? And how hard is it for us to now go from not a recognized permanent waterway to yes, it is, and we need to do something about it? Before it becomes completely destroyed?
Great question, yes. So the process by which we make an official agency determination of yes, this is a water of the US, so that blue part of the Venn diagram, is called an approved jurisdictional determination. We are determining that this is either, either has jurisdiction or does not have jurisdiction. And what's important about that is because it's an official agency decision, it is appealable. And there's a, I guess the word is dispute resolution process for if we disagree, that the Corps and whoever is requesting the approved jurisdictional determination. Approved jurisdictional determinations are good for five years. And they are posted to our website. So you can look for the website in our, in our presentation and have a little rummage through the approved jurisdictional determinations that we've done for the last five years. Where am I going with this? AJD is, so we have to make determinations based on what we see at the time of a site visit. Bearing in mind, like if there's been a drought or if it like just rained, there can be like some false positives and false negatives. So with those things in mind, given climate change, we've had this question before about like, what is the upper limit of tidal extent? With sea level rise, we're anticipating to be more tidal flushing further upstream. And so that tidal limit for Section 10 may go upstream. Just like the example on the Big Island where they had utility line trenches, they left it open because of some things they couldn't control. And now it rises and falls with the tide. We changed our, our jurisdictional determination effectively. And we said before, that's uplands. I don't think we did an official determination, but I, I think we had looked at that before as uplands. And after what happened, now this is a traditionally navigable water. It rises and falls with the tide. These activities require a Corps permit. So I would say.
And so in, in situations like that, what you just said, there is a mechanism for a stop order on the project in order for that determination time to be, in order for you to do all the, what would it be administrative process of changing the jurisdictional?
Yeah, so like if somebody's doing work in what is now a water of the US and they don't have a Corps permit, that's called an unauthorized action. And it may be a violation. So it depends on what the activity is. And it may be a violation, so it depends on what the activity is. So we, like, in general, we would start that process with trying to gather more information about what is this unauthorized action, and to determine whether it does need a permit. Is this a water of the US? Is the activity regulated? If it does need a permit, then we would issue what's called a notice of violation, and start working on what is the process for resolution. And sometimes that notice of violation can come with a stop work order.
Thank you. Okay, I know I take up too much more time, but I have one last question. What constitutes ordinary high-water mark, and how often is the calculation adjusted? And what warrants a change in the mark line?
Great question. So it's not an official NOAA datum. It's based on, and actually, so even though we're a few definitions of waters of the US past orpanos, the Orpanos data sheet has a bunch of the checkboxes that include the kind of characteristics we're looking for when we're looking for an ordinary high-water mark. Some examples could be below this line, there's no vegetation, and above this line, there's vegetation. Because water's flowing regularly enough at this high-water point that rooted vegetation doesn't survive. So that's an example of where we might, a characteristic we might use to delineate the ordinary high-water mark. Some other characteristics could be erosion or staining. Use it like soil is flowing through here and below here, the veget, like, maybe it's a slow flow. The vegetation is stained with, or the rocks there are stained with soil, and above here, they're not stained. So that might be something that we're looking for. So that's, again, the, that would fall under, that delineation would fall under the approved jurisdictional determination. So somebody who wants to do a project in that stream, so we don't necessarily have this for all streams everywhere. We would only really look at it if somebody's proposing to do a project in that stream, like a utility line crossing, or a low-water ford crossing, or a culvert. So if we have done that, and we didn't approve jurisdictional determination, that would only be good for five years. And so if the work still hasn't been done after that five-year period, we might need to take another look.
Thank you, Vera. That was very helpful. Thank you so much. Any other commissioners have any other questions? Commissioner Kelly.
Sorry. I know the question came up about, was there previous violations, especially with Army Corps? So there was on the east end back in 2005, sorry, 2005. But there was an article. Could I share that with commissioners? It's just an article. At least someone would be able to, because there was a violation in the wetland, and Army Corps and EPA got involved.
Can she share it in the chat? Is that okay, Andrew? To make it accessible to the public and commissioners?
Hello, I think that in general, we do not use the chat for communication just by planning staff to the public on how to testify. But she could email that to you, Chair, and then we could distribute that to the board and also post it on the meeting materials for today's meeting on our website. Thank you.
Sounds, sounds good, Andrew. Thank you. Commissioner Kelly, is that good with you?
Yes, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you so much. Okay, anybody else have any questions? I would just like to entertain the idea from the commission, since Vera has so graciously said if we have any advice, that perhaps this commission would consider us drafting a letter to the Department, the Army Corps of Engineers, sorry, and and with some of the suggestions we have based on the presentation in ways that we could either benefit or give as a commission. And Andrew, I think that's doable, right? We could draft the letter with some considerations and questions and things like that, and then transmit it through as a commission. Is that correct?
Yes, we can agendaize discussing, you know, what would go into that letter at a future meeting.
Okay, got it. Okay. So I think we'll do that. And then is there anyone from the community wishing to testify on this agenda item?
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Aloha, this is Sibyl Lopez in the Molokai Office, Staff Planner. We did have a question from the public, but they're wishing not to testify. And just for the record, all presentations that has been submitted to the department will be available on our website for the public. Thank you.
Sibyl, would you like to pose the question?
Yeah, the question was in relationship to the PowerPoint presentation that was that was presented to the commission by the Army Corps of Engineers, and I answered it by saying that for the record, it is on our website in on the MauiCounty.gov website under the Molokai Planning Commission, and it's available right now to the public. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sibyl, for that clarification. Okay, thank you, Vera. We really appreciate your time, and we mahalo you. I'm sure we will be speaking again. Aloha. Okay, commissioners, we're going to move on to contested case hearings. So pursuant to Chapter 9110-10, the HRS and Subchapter 4 of the Molokai Planning Commission Rules of Practice, the procedure and any individual wishing to testify on these items is required to do so under oath, and may be asked questions by the applicant and members of the commission. The applicant may provide comments in response to each testifier and should notify the commission if it wishes to do so. So item number one is Special Management Area SMA Exemption Determination. Munakio, Hiraga, and Austin Tsuumi and Associates Incorporated, on behalf of GTE Hawaiian Tel Company Incorporated, is requesting a Special Management Area exemption for the installation of a new duct line consisting of two four-inch PVC scheduled 40 conduit encased in concrete, starting from an existing telephone manhole located in Hawaiian Telcom Inc. Konoka Kai Central Office Parking Lot, which will proceed north for approximately 55 lineal feet, cross under Commando 5 Highway, and terminate at an existing communication manhole located in the grass landscape within the highway right of located at the 30 Commando 5 Highway at the right of way in Konoka Kai Island of Molokai Hawaii Tax Map Key I'll turn it over to our staff planner, Sibyl.
Mahalo Chair, aloha commissioners. I'm Sibyl Lopez, the staff planner on the project that is before you today. As Chair shared, that this is an applicant, the applicant is Munakio Hiraga and Austin Tsuumi and Associates. The owner is GTE Hawaiian Telephone Company. We do have them here today, but before I turn the time over to them, I'll just speak a little bit about the project. We, the applicant or the department is requested pursuant to Section 12-302-13.1 of the Molokai Planning Commission Rules. The commission may vote to issue an exemption or not issue an exemption. This is actually situated in the central district of Konoka Kai Town. It is zoned Konoka Kai Country Town Business District. If the, if the planning commission exempts the project, the Country Town Business District application will be administratively approved by the department. It is an installation and improvement of a duct line with 40 conduits encased in concrete. So I will be introducing Emily Marai, who's the lead from Munakio Hiraga, and she can take over, introduce herself and her team, and we do have a presentation that she provided to us, and we did upload it on our county website for the public. And anything else? That's it. And without further ado, Ms. Emily Marai. Mahalo.
Aloha, Ms. Marai. Mahalo for joining us today. Do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
Mahalo. Please proceed.
Thank you. So I'm sharing my screen now. It is the application for Special Management Area Exemption Determination for this Commando 5 Highway Duct Line Improvements Project. Again, my name is Emily Marai from Munakio Hiraga, and I just want to start by saying thank you to all the commissioners and Department of Planning staff that are here and for your time to listen to this presentation before you today. So we do have the applicant Hawaiian Telcom on the line with us, Kalani Andrade, Ryan Nguyen, and Peter Nguyen from Hawaiian Tel, as well as the Civil Engineer Austin Tsuumi and Associates, who is represented by Chad Karakawa and Keith Hasigawa, and again, myself from Munakio Hiraga. So to go over where the project is located, this is the Hawaiian Telcom Office property parcel here. It will only involve a portion of this area, though, as well as a portion of Commando 5 Highway, existing highway. And it's next to Molokai Cheeseburger, near the library, Benkahoi, and the Molokai Center. So the purpose of this duct line improvement project is for, to improve internet and telecommunications service. So it's in line with the Molokai Community Plan, which has identified that limited access to high-speed internet and telecommunications services presents challenges for education, healthcare, residents, and businesses. So the purpose of the proposed project, it will allow Hawaiian Telcom to provide more reliable, critical broadband internet and telecommunications services to the underserved and unserved areas of Molokai, including les seas located on State Department of Hawaiian Homeland's homesteads. And so overall, this broadband will support critical services to residents, local businesses, schools, and healthcare facilities. To the scope of work, as Sibyl kind of summarized, the proposed action involves underground installation of a new duct line consisting of two four-inch PVC conduits encased in concrete. And the duct line will be installed from an existing telephone manhole located at the Hawaiian Telcom Konoka Kai Central Office Parking Lot for approximately 55 lineal feet within the Commando 5 Highway, and ends at an existing communication manhole located in the grass landscape within the highway. So here's a location or aerial photo of where the duct line will be installed. So this is the Hawaiian Tel Office. It'll start from an existing manhole. This is a picture of where it's located at the office. And it'll extend underground across the highway to another existing manhole across the street. And this is the manhole that it'll connect to across the Hawaiian Telcom Office. And this is just a view of kind of adjacent to the Hawaiian Tel Office along Commando 5 Highway. And so pursuant to the Molokai Planning Commission Rules and Chapter 205A Hawaii Revised Statutes, the project involves installation of underground utility lines and a pertinent above-ground fixtures less than four feet in height along existing corridors. And as such, the proposed action is not considered development. I will note that this is just the exemption or non-development class for our category within the statute. However, the project or proposed action does not involve above-ground fixtures. It'll be limited to the underground utilities. So there is, will be some proposed ground disturbance in the form of trenching. So trench excavations will be approximately 18 inches wide and 48 inches below grade. Excavations will include pavement stripping, backfilling, and pavement restoration. This is just an example of a typical trench section. This is the roadway. And then this is down here where the ducts will be installed, and again, those two four-inch conduits here. So the project did go through SHPD review as part of this process. There was an archaeological monitoring plan that was prepared and accepted by Shipti via letter dated August 2, 2024. And the archaeological monitor, as part of the plan, will meet with the construction team to brief them on procedures for archaeological monitoring in the event that historic properties or archaeological features are identified. The archaeological monitor will be on site for all ground disturbing construction activities. In addition, a report summarizing the monitoring will be submitted to Shipti following construction for their acceptance. So considering that this is a state highway and in the business country town district, there will be a traffic control plan implemented. This has been prepared for the construction phase. Traffic controls will be used, including traffic signs, cones, and the use of flag personnel to direct traffic. In order to protect the public during the construction phase, the public will not be allowed to access active work areas. And to mitigate these temporary impacts to the highway, Hawaiian Telcom will ensure the contractor maintains public access. So there will be at least one lane of traffic open to allow for the continued flow of traffic, as well as with, like we said, flag personnel kind of directing cars and traffic during the construction time. So the duration of the actual construction, when this traffic monitoring may be needed, it's approximately two months, but that is a really conservative estimate. It is anticipated to be much less, but that would be the anticipated kind of max amount that the highway might be impacted. And so with that, we are respectfully requesting the Molokai Planning Commission's approval of a Special Management Area Exemption Determination for the Commando 5 Highway Duct Line Improvements Project. That is the end of our presentation, and we'd like to open up to any questions from the commission or the public. Thank you so much.
Mahalo, Emily. We would, at this time, I would like to open up public testimony for anyone wishing to contribute to the discussion before the commission reviews this application. Is there anybody in the community wishing to testify on this agenda item?
Hi Chair, this is Chantel. I see no one online wishing to testify.
Aloha Chair, this is Sibyl Lopez in the Molokai Office, and there's no one here wishing to testify. Thank you.
All right, mahalo. If we can clear the shared screen so I can see the commissioners on the screen, mahalo. Okay, commissioners, we are in the discussion portion and question portion of this agenda item. Does any commissioner have any questions? Commissioner Hanapi Hirata.
Hi, aloha. Mahalo you folks for the presentation. I would like to, okay, I'm going to ask some questions and then make a comment after, and then give a recommendation. So who is your folks' archeologic or archaeology firm, or who's going to be the archaeologist on site to be the monitor in this project?
So the archaeological consultant is International Archaeology, and I believe we have the name of the person that would be monitoring in the monitoring plan, so I can pull that up right now in just a minute.
Thank you.
Okay, so project manager is Christopher Philly-Mo. Okay, so project manager is Christopher Filimoy Hala. And the project's physical anthropologist will be Rona Michiikehara Quebrall from International Archaeology.
So they're on, they're both gonna be here? An archaeologist and an anthropologist?
I'm not sure if they will both be here, but the archaeological monitor will be professional archaeologist. So they need to be identified as having the ability to identify the archaeological deposits or finds if necessary.
Okay. I just was wanting to be clear on who that was gonna be. And then for this, since I'm along those lines, Chair, I would like to recommend that a cultural monitor also be on site. Cultural monitors are completely separate from archaeologists, even an anthropologist. I, I little bit hesitant on that part, but what archaeologists and a cultural monitor is completely separate. So Chair, if you can note that I would like to recommend a cultural monitor be on site. I have a question in regards to, what is this? This is the exemption notice. So I noticed on page, doesn't even have a page number. Oh no, it does. Page eleven. Page eleven and twelve, you guys have one list that of come. I'm gonna just assume this is just a regular generalized list of consultants that you guys sent a letter to. On top of here, you guys sent the consultation out in 2023. So I do not see on top of here that the County of Maui's archaeologist, whether you folks know this or not, Maui County has their own archaeologists on staff. So Dr. Janet Six is not listed on here in any of the departments this was sent to. I do see that the State Historic Preservation Office and some of their correspondences did CC Dr. Janet Six as the archaeologist. I would have really liked to see what was her recommendations or any type of letter input that she would have had in the future, just so you folks know, perhaps you guys can send that to her directly. I wanna make note that the very last, on page twelve, for consultations, you guys went and sent this to the Aha Moku on Maui, to Ako Kiamoku Kapu. Why would you guys send it to Maui? Molokai has their own. Can you answer me why you didn't send it to Molokai?
Thank you for the question. I think that may have just been an oversight. I'm not sure if he would have forwarded it to anyone else on Molokai, but I'm, yeah, I don't have an answer for that.
Did he respond?
An oversight. He did not respond.
So the Aha Moku's fall under the Department of Land and Natural Resources. They fall, like, they're in one of the departments there. So when you send your generalized letter to DLNR, it'll go to the different departments like SHPD. And under SHPD, you get the History and Culture Branch. And then you also have the Archaeology Branch and stuff. But they have their own executive director, paid staff for the Aha Moku. And she usually funnels it to the different islands and the representatives, and then will draft the letter in one formality. That's where you guys are gonna really find, not only, that's one of the many different areas that you're really gonna find the cultural part of knowledge that you guys are seeking in different, for this project or any other project you have. So kind of knowing exactly who to send the letters to is very important. That's just a comment that I have. I also don't, so on top of page twelve, it says the copies of the consultation letter and comment letters that were received or any responses would have been in Exhibit A. I did not get Exhibit A in my packet, just to let the Planning Department know and staff know, I didn't get that. I did get a few corresponding letters going back and forth between SHPD, but nothing else. Also, I wanna make comment to the, the ARC report that you guys have here, the monitoring plan. I appreciate the report. We appreciate any kind of plans and mana'os you guys have. But on page five, they lumped in, you folks lumped in environmental and cultural background together in one. That should always be separated. And then, again, I appreciate what you guys have written in here. But if we're gonna start talking about history and traditional history and all of that kind of give historical background, cultural geography and all of that stuff, I would appreciate when well thorough report than something like this. But that's just a comment that I have, and that's all I have, Chair. Thank you very much.
Mahalo, Commissioner Hirata. Commissioner Albino.
Mahalo for your presentation. I also agree with Commissioner Hirata. There are archaeologists on Molokai. Why weren't these, as well as cultural consultants on Molokai? Why weren't these consulted? Because Maui is a separate island. They have their own moolelo. Molokai has its own. I see nothing in here pertaining to cultural information regarding the area that you have proposed to, designed to include these cables underground. Why isn't that in this report that's important? And I also would request strongly that you put a cultural monitor there. Who knows Molokai? These people are not known to us. And you've included data from different archaeological reports that do not include thorough moolelo or evidence of Molokai's cultural history of that area. So I'm requesting that you do that before your project proceeds. Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, yeah, I totally koko'ol commissioner Albino and Hirata, but I just wanna make a statement, and then Andrew, you can jump in and just kind of give me your mana'o if I'm wrong. Under the current agendized item, we as a commission are only allowed to approve or disapprove the SMA exemption. Okay, we cannot make conditions to the exemption. We either approve it or disapprove it. If, if there is significant concern from the commission that it does not meet the requirements of an exemption, for instance, that there is significant unknowns to impact cultural or environmental protocol that has not already been addressed in there and no more sufficient evidence, then we would have to deny the project. And it would in turn come back to us as a minor permit, at which time the commission can make conditions and set conditions to the approval of a minor permit. The second thing, Andrew, if you can correct me if I'm wrong, is that as a matter of like just talking story and courtesy for the record, the applicant would be able to agree or disagree in our conversation right now of some of the comments the commissioners have made. Is that, is that true, Andrew? Without a formal need to deny and put formal conditions?
Let's see. Well, taking the first part of what you described, that is what is before the commission today is the review of a SMA exemption. And then that's pursuant to Molokai Planning Commission SMA Rules, Section thirteen point one. And so we are deciding whether the project is exempt or not exempt. And then, Chair, what was the second question?
That would another option as opposed to disapproving so that we could get the commissioners' comments and conditions on the record that the applicant would be able in this venue to agree to certain things that the commissioners have concerns about, like a cultural monitor on site.
The commission can make recommendations, but not attach conditions to the exemption, right? We can either decide to grant it or find that the project is not exempt. But then that, of course, needs to be based on the HRS 205A twenty-two. You know, as Emily noted, the proposed action is defined as not a development and therefore exempt in 205A twenty-two. However, you know, as we have discussed, you know, multiple times now, there is a paragraph at the end of that HRS section regarding cumulative or significant environmental or ecological impacts. So if the commission finds evidence on the record that the proposed action may cause cumulative or significant environmental or ecological impacts, then it can find the action to be a development and require that, or deny the exemption.
Okay, I understand. Okay, I have a question, I have a couple of questions for the applicant. Does this project in any way, at present or in the future, be connected, is connected or will be connected to a larger project? For instance, underwater sea cable inclusion or improvements that are part of a bigger scope in a project that at any time this specific project will be or can be connected to a much larger project that we're not reviewing today?
Kalani or Hawaiian Tel, do you like to take that?
Yeah, I can respond to that. Yeah, at this time, there are other projects that we're potentially looking at. So there is some opportunities to expand the infrastructure and access to broadband within the Molokai community. So there is potential for some future federal, I mean, sorry, some future HD projects that we potentially are looking at.
Are you able to tell us what those projects or potential projects are?
Sure, there's a NTIA middle mile project that we're looking at, providing an inter-island cable system in addition to some key pressure routes throughout the state that will help provide some redundancy and resiliency to the islands, as well as address some of the climate change activities that we're seeing. So moving a lot of our infrastructure off the coastline, putting some infrastructure underground, getting off telephone, you know, telephone poles and things like that to kind of prepare for environmental impacts down the road.
So would, would some of this include some of the underwater sea cable connections and interstate connections that have been hosting public meetings?
Yes, that, it's, it's gonna be for public access broadband infrastructure for the entire state. That answered your question properly.
Thank you so much, Kalani. Okay, I have one more question, a couple more questions. Does Hawaiian Tel have a overall plan about decommissioning? And a plan for decommissioning of outdated or infrastructure and underground, underground and surface structures, infrastructure that is currently being used and decommissioning plans to address climate change and sea level rise?
I think, you know, we're, we're including a lot of the studies that we've seen into our planning going forward. There is plans around removing old facilities from aerial infrastructure, unused and legacy older gear that is no longer maintained or managed. So there is, there's a plan for that. Some of that was done as we're, you know, building out new fiber infrastructure to the island of Molokai as well. But we'll continue to look at facility mitigation over the next three to five years to reduce our attachments on poles, get legacy infrastructure removed, and looking at new diverse routes to address some of the climate change and coastal areas we're seeing throughout the state.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Is there a process for the Molokai community to be included in future plans and decommissioning plans, future infrastructure plans, upgrading the system? Is there any kind of opportunity for our community to be involved in those plans and how would that work?
Definitely. We're still in the engineering and design phases now, but once we get closer to identifying the details and the scope, we definitely wanna work, work with the community and do community outreach as well to just identify the areas that could potentially be impacted, as well as the benefits and what we're trying to do over the next three to five years. And so as we further get along with our engineering firm and develop plans and permitting, we would definitely want community input and participation in reviewing some of those plans that we have. And if, if there's, and Chair, if there's a, if there's a process that you could recommend that we use, because initially, a lot of our, you know, discussions have been through the county and the state. And so if there are, you know, key personnel that we should discuss and meet with on a regular basis to inform the community as well as, you know, the folks that are interested, we'd appreciate that if you could provide that information to us. We definitely would seek guidance on that as well.
Thank you so much. And then maybe a question for our presenter. How do you, your, how does Munukia Hiraga decide on cultural consultation and firms when dealing with specific culturally sensitive areas or communities? So what's the process behind the selection of your so-called subject matter experts and the materials or information that you gather to justify the impacts, negative or positive, on a project?
So we do, you know, we work with several consultants under us, or we, you know, try to find someone that is able to first, you know, do the consultation with SHPD and then also have the cultural interviews and contacts to do so. Sometimes if we are not working or, you know, through our other forms of consultation, we'll do, we have lists of NHOs or, like for example, Aha Moku contacts that we will try to reach out to for this particular project. The archaeology was contracted, I believe, under ATA. So it was selected that way. Or, you know, a lot of times it's people that have the capacity as well to be able to take on some of these projects. But I, we didn't personally select the consultant for in this, for this project.
So Hawaiian Tel selected them? Or did they select themselves?
Not too sure. Is it under Hawaiian Tel or ATA?
Oh, hi. Okay. Oh, sorry. Please go ahead. Oh, anyway, this is Chad Kauta Call from ATA, just confirming that the archaeologist was contracted under ATA.
Sorry, one second. Chad, you swear to tell the truth?
Oh, yes, I swear to tell the truth.
Sorry, and Kalani, you swear to tell the truth and going continue to tell the truth?
Yes, I do.
I just take for granted, everybody's going to tell the truth. So I sometimes forget, but thank you guys for entertaining us with that. Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. Just Chad Kauta Call from ATA, confirming that we did contract international archaeology to assist us with the SHPD six E process and as well as creating the AMP report. Typically, we try to find professionals out there who have assisted us in the past to help us with projects in very similar nature and to help us to go through the SMA process as well as to gain SHPD's approval.
Okay, mahalo. Okay, Commissioners, any further questions? Auntie, go ahead, Anake. You muted, Anake.
Thank you for the response to that question about how you go about determining which consultant to mitigate your problem going forth here on Molokai. For one thing, Ahamoku does not exist currently on Molokai in its present form because of the problem with DLNR. And Ahamoku Inc. of Maui does not determine Molokai's future or its processes moving forward. And so it is an offense to the Molokai community when you decide to go international and make it as if everybody out there knows better than Molokai people. That's an insult. This is coming from a cultural consultant myself. I don't have to be there, but there are others who are indeed cultural and archaeological experts here on Molokai. But don't assume that Molokai will not get involved. Our community is very involved in the culture and historical in any project that involves this kind of wide spread change, whether in communications or otherwise, any kind of development. So please consider Molokai as a separate entity when you decide who you're going to choose as far as archaeology or consulting entities. There are many here on Molokai. Do not ignore us because you will run into problems when projects come up just like this, when the community hears some strange person that we don't know that does not know Molokai more little or history to come over here and act like they do. It's an insult to us. Thank you.
Mahalo, Nui Anake. Debbie, Commissioner Kelly?
Yes, I have, sorry, I have several questions. I'm going down the line. The water table. Anyone knows what the water table is in the project area?
Oh, hi. This is Chad Kauta Call again from ATA. I don't know if we have an exact number, but we do have the assumed high water table mark at elevation zero, which is typical for our practice.
So your water table is zero?
Yes, correct. And our, so just to help to explain, the water table is below the roadway of the highway. The highway currently is sitting at elevation, one, two, three, four, maybe six feet?
Sorry. What's the elevation that you have for the highway?
It's six feet above the assumed water table, high water, high watermark.
I would challenge that. Yeah. I would seriously challenge that. But, okay, I understand the trenching will be at least four feet deep. And according to blueprint, supposed to be eighteen inches wide. But I'm assuming that you're going to go a little bit deeper as well as wider. That material that will be taken out of the trench area, I'm not sure if some of it is going to be put back once the pipes and concrete is in. But whatever material is removed in the trench, will some of it be stored somewhere else? And the other material that might not go back into the trench, where is that going to be removed to? I'd like to know where. So you can get back to me about that. So one of the issue, one of my concerns is that according to the drawings, the bottom of the trench will be the concrete with the pipe within that. Is there going to be a liner below the concrete? Because, you know, that would be where, when our tides come in or, you know, when the water table rises, because I can tell you it's the water table is very shallow there. Then concrete will be sitting, might be sitting in water. So my question is, will there be a liner below the concrete? Let's see. Instruction notes. And the other issue was Exhibit A with the consultation letters. Yeah, I don't think any of us got Exhibit A. If there was any comments that was returned with the consultation letters. But my main concern was, did the businesses that's being impacted, like the Molokai Community Service Council, they are right there and, you know, right on the highway where they consulted because, you know, they park right there as well as the businesses like Bank of Hawaii and all the buildings because that's a public parking area that people would have to go in and out. So was the businesses in that area consulted? At least so that they were known, made known that this project is going on as well as let's see, the timeframe. According to the application, it would be started in twenty twenty-four and sometime in twenty twenty-five. If that's true, we might be hitting our rainy season where water levels would rise. That might be a concern also. And according to like Army Corps, when that happens, your trench might have water in it. Are you prepared for that? And the other thing was, sorry, it kind of slipped my mind because there was a lot that I had questions on. Sorry, if I think of it, I'll come back and ask you. So anyone able to answer any of my questions?
Um, I can answer regarding the liner below the
Sorry, Keith, do you swear to tell the truth?
Oh, yes, also, yeah, I would.
And can you just acknowledge who you were?
Oh, okay. My name is Keith Osagawa and I'm with Austin Swimming Associates.
Thank you.
Regarding the liner, there will be no liner below the concrete encasement. The concrete would be placed directly onto the subgrade.
Okay. Commissioner Kelly, is there any other question that you didn't get answered?
Um, consultation letters to the businesses that would be affected by the traffic. Were they notified? And, sorry, and the last question I had was there is going, it was noted that there's a water line and a sewer line in the project area that you would be maybe coming in contact with. Is there any notes of what would happen if that was impacted?
Can we respond to the first?
I believe from the Azalea drawings we researched, the sewer line is relatively deep. So the sewer line shouldn't be impacted. We would be crossing the water line. The minimum clearance would be twelve inches once exposed and verified. Hopefully during construction, the contractor shouldn't damage the water line. If he does, he would have to repair it at his cost. And that, I believe there is notes for that.
Sorry, I didn't see it, but if there's notes, that's fine. When you say there's twelve inches, I'm assuming the water line is below your project area?
No, the water line is actually, I think, at minimum cover of three feet. So anytime you're installing any utility within the state highway, minimum cover is at three feet. So since the water line was installed earlier or in the past, it would be at the shallowest cover. And then the duck line would come in, so it would have to clear the water line at a minimum vertical clearance. And then the duck line would go under that.
Okay, sorry, I was looking at the profile of the duck line. It doesn't just says fuel two. I mean, it's only because there's a dip, yeah?
Yes.
So is that why? Why is there a dip?
The dip is there to clear the existing water line and also the fuel line also.
So there is a fuel line also that wasn't?
We don't, see, we contacted the gas company and they don't know who owns that or whether that's actually there or whether it's still in use actually. So we're not sure. So we just added that as a precaution in the event that the contractor does trench and come across that. They know that they need to avoid that.
Okay.
Can I, can I take a break of this one second? Our staff planner has her hand up and might have some information that we could use. Go ahead, Sibyl.
Mahalo, Chair. I will be speaking in reference to Exhibit A that I think a couple of the commissioners had questions regarding that. And I would like to take the commission back to the planner, the staff report. So part of the application process with the SMA, the SMA does require chapter three for three. And under chapter three for three, part of what you're requesting is actually the department deems this whole application complete. And part of that exhibit, let me try to explain it as good as I can and as clear as I can. You know, the department feels that the applicant did provide a completed application. And part of that application, as I said, the requirements is a trigger of chapter three for three, which is the environmental assessment. And part of the application that was submitted was to address chapter three for three. And although the, although the Exhibit A under the EAE is not required, what was required was then the environmental assessment exemption. And so the applicant did provide their exemption notice and that was included within that. What you're asking about Exhibit A is a part of their exemption notice. But in its totality, the department does concur with Department of Transportation under their EAE. And so that, so I just wanted to make that clarification. I just don't want any more confusion, but they have met the requirement of an environmental assessment exemption. And that exemption falls under Hawaii Administrative Rules, section eleven dash two hundred point one through eight. And the exemption that they're claiming is exemption type three and exemption type three, part one. Thank you.
Mahalo, Sibyl. So Commissioners, you guys understand, because we are in, the agenda is item is just simply to decide whether we agree that this is on the department's recommendation that this is a exempt SMA exemption, because our decision is just to either agree or disagree, to approve or disapprove the department's recommendation. Certain criteria included in our packet was not included because it already justified itself as an exemption to the department. Should you need that stuff, that's where we would request for that in a SMA minor. Okay. Any other commissioner with any other questions? Okay, if not, I am going to call for the vote. So any commissioners wishing to make a motion? Commissioner Hana P. Hirata?
Mahalo, Chair. I want to make a motion to deny.
Any second? Okay. Hang on. Andrew, are you raising your hand?
Yeah, just I wanted to clarify that the motion would not be to deny the project. It would just be to reach a determination that the project is not exempt because it qualifies as a development. But I did also, I did also want to note that the commission should identify, you know, some justification on the record as to why the proposed activity qualifies as a development. And that's that same HRS section that we discussed at our last meeting as well. Rule five A twenty-two. So we know that according to the definition of development, the proposed activity specifically not included. But there is a a paragraph at the end of that section that says, provided that whenever the authority finds that any excluded activity, which the proposed activity is an excluded activity, may have a cumulative impact or a significant environmental or ecological effect on a special management area, that activity shall be defined as a development. You know, and therefore wouldn't be exempt. But we do need to identify in what way on the record, you know, do, does anyone you know, find that the proposed activity may have a cumulative impact or a significant environmental or ecological effect? And it needs, you know,
Thank you, Andrew.
Beyond sort of like a hypothetical. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. You and train us so well. We was actually prepared for everything you just said, but go ahead, uh Commissioner. Wait, so sorry, we are motion on the floor. Um, motion is to um not, not exempt the SMA um exemption. And it was moved by Commissioner Hirata and seconded by Commissioner um Albino. Um, so because of what Andrew just said, um, I am going to allow Commissioner um Albino or Hirata to speak first and then we can have discussion. So, Commissioner Albino. You mute, you muted on account.
I also concur with Commissioner Hirata because, as mentioned, an E A is not sufficient evidence to justify any kind of development there because an E I S is a more thorough way of defining the area. When we talk about the, the level of the sea and the salt that deposited, I see on the on the evidences, there's no indication of that. There's a salt pan at the same level of that road or ground level that's all covered with asphalt. Or we would see when the rain falls, everything will be salty in that area. So those are things that have to be considered and then E A does not does not fulfill the requirement for a cultural impact statement that is needed for this area. Because if we allow it, all kinds of other developments, because it is a place, the town is a business area, that could easily be, any, any um development can be easily approved. So based on that, that E A is not sufficient evidence to reflect the cultural sensitivity of that area, which is owned by Kamehameha. And so because based on that, I also concur with um Commissioner Hirata that it will definitely negatively impact the future of that area and Kauna Kakaai. And so environmentally, and it's cumulative. Um, that is my reason for my sustaining her in her uh motion. Thank you.
Mahalo, um Commissioner Albino. Andrew.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to point out that the applicant has received a um, uh uh an exempted action determination um from the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation and that no further uh H R S three forty-three environmental reviews are required. Um, you know, so for instance, they won't be doing an E I S in connection with this project. They, they already have their three forty-three approval.
Thank you, Andrew. Okay, I, I wanna, I wanna add to this discussion and, and I concur with Commissioner Hirata also. Um, and specifically, I would like to cite um that provided that whenever the authority finds that the excluded use activity or operation may have a cumulative impact or a significant environmental ecological effect on a special management area, that used activity or operation shall be defined as a development for the purpose of this part. Um, by admittance of the um Hawaiian Tel, this project can and will and is being reviewed as a small part of a possibly bigger part, which would include underwater sea cables. My, my, um, my reason for wanting to add conditions and to send this away and, and deem this as a development is simply that, um, as a small project, the cumulative impact may not be um outrightly obvious or deemed as something that um negatively impacts our community. And, and what that does is that when there is a bigger project, like the underwater sea cables, um advancements in technology in our, on a shoreline that come through the ocean and these small portions that are exempt now become part of a bigger project, we don't have a mechanism to be included in the conversation of the actual larger project. Um, this commission would not have oversight over specifically that part of the project. And because uh Hawaiian Tel has admitted that that's something that they're looking at, I believe that this is a portion of a bigger project that will have cumulative impacts on our community that we haven't had a chance to review. Now, do I think that actually really appreciate um the work that has been done so far? And if there was a mechanism in the exemption for us to include criteria and conditions that um would initiate some of the um, um safeguards that we wanna put in place and some of the inclusions for our community and this jurisdictional body um to be included, I, I think there might be a different method. But with lack of that and the, and the idea that I see this as possibly having significant cumulative impact when it is attached to a bigger proposed project that we have no idea of or have no information of, I think that's a valid reason um to deny the exemption. In, in, um, in addition to that, I have cited several because Sybil has trained us well and I know she'll ask me, Chair, you know, how, what kinds of conditions or recommendations which you have, and I don't know if it's appropriate um since we doing this to discuss some of the things that we looking at. Um, Sybil or Andrew, is it appropriate for me now to outline some of the things that I talking about? Or do we wait for the vote and then? If it's applicable, um.
Uh Chair, I recommend um allowing the applicant to respond um to, to uh, you know, what, what you uh just discussed.
Um, what do you mean? We're in discussion for a vote and there's a motion on the floor. What, what would we, wh- what kind of response are we looking for?
Uh, you know, just whether they uh, you know, have any response as to um how this project uh may or may not um tie into a larger project.
He already, he already said that earlier on the record. That they, they were anticipating looking at me and I specifically asked if it was the underwater cable project and he said yes. I don't know who is K F, who is K F? With their hand up.
Uh, good afternoon, Chair. My name is Karlin Fukura. Can you hear me? I'm with Munikiyo Hirata.
Okay, um, who do you represent? Okay, and do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, I do. So, um, I
Go ahead.
Sorry, there seems to be a delay. So I work with Emily Marai uh from our office and we work together on this project. Um, and I, I have been um listening in on the um discussions that have gone so far. And I wanted to just share uh maybe a couple of thoughts uh relative to the application. Um, you know, one is, I, I did hear uh your Chair's remarks just now about the potential for the project to be part of a larger project. Um, and I, I just wanted to share that, you know, any type of larger project um would and, and I'm guessing, you know, that the commission is aware of this, but wanted to just share that that would be required to come, you know, and apply for its own permits. You know, any work within the shoreline, any work within the SMA area, you know, um. So, I, I just want to show that, you know, that there, this would not be the, maybe the end-all um for the discussion if, if that were to happen. Um, and then secondly, I think um in discussions with um Hawaiian Telcom, um, I think although it's, I know that that's not the only comment that the commission had about the proposed project today. I think having a cultural monitor during construction would be something that, you know, could be considered. Uh, I understand what um was being proposed as a option. I, I think anyway, if I understood correctly, um of being able to have that commitment separate from um the application. But if that is not the, the direction that the commission would like to seek, because you would like to make it a condition, um, that's, of course, the commission's decision as well, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Karlin. Okay, so commissioners, we're still in discussion and um uh, you know, my question to Andrew or Sybil was whether or not it would be advantageous to kind of cite some of the stuff we have, but I gonna hold off on that um right now. So, com- commissioners, we are in discussion about whether or not um the motion has been made by Commissioner Hirata to um not exempt the project, seconded by Commissioner Albino. Um, I think, I feel comfortable that this commission has provided um the reasons for why we find that it could potentially have cumulative impacts. I think that the records and the recording of this meeting will attest to the fact that it was acknowledged that there is um potential and um the idea that this could be part of a bigger project. Um, and I waiting for commissioners to, if you have any other discussion or anything else that anybody would like to say. Okay, and, and then I guess I would ask Andrew if our explanation to why um to the reason we deem this as a development is sufficient enough for you or do you need me to elaborate more?
Uh Chair, um, yeah, it's, it's, you know, not really my um determination to make as to whether it's sufficient. Um, and you know, if I was going to provide analysis on that point, um, I think I would ask to do that in executive session. Um, however, uh, you know, I, I did um just wanna point out the um way that uh H R S two oh five A twenty-two is set up. Um, and then uh, you know, I do recognize that um that you've uh pointed out. Um, you know, the way in which you think this project um qualifies as a development. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you. Really appreciate you. Um, I, I would like to add to my comments that, um we have seen time and time again where, and I, and I'm not particularly talking about um Hawaiian Telcom right now because I, I personally love the company and um see all the good work and advantages they've done for our community. Uh, but our, our concern, my concern is that we need to be able, there are several things that I think is missing just from the overall um anybody who can do work in Kauna Kakaai Town and near our shoreline. Um, the county has already designated that the town needs to move up. Pretty much all of our facilities in town are experiencing effects of drainage and high water and just all those things. And so these kinds of, of projects interest me and, and cause me to have greater concern too because I know that they're gonna impact. The, and, and water, the, the problem with water or hitting the water table or or having construction and materials going down into our earth and like even hitting a high water marks, water table, whatever it be at some stop. That water infiltrates all of our Aina and, and has a cumulative impact even though we think it's only little bit, might only be a little bit of water, but it's still sitting. We still have foreign materials sitting in one area where in, as an effect um to me, need some more information. Like one of the things I would like to know is, it's obvious that when you guys was doing your report and Te O Pulaani hit on it, there is a fuel line down there that nobody has claimed, nobody know whether get fuel going through. And, and, and that's, that's mind blowing to me that that whatever authorities are responsible for what's going on under there are still permitting projects like yours to coexist near an undefined utility line or fuel line that we don't know whether it's leaking, whether, who it belongs to, what it's being used for. But even more than that, how are all of you gonna remove all that junk from there in the next fifteen years? Or however long it takes or as the town moves up? What is gonna happen to all that when what is now three hundred feet from the shoreline is right now at the high watermark? So, um, I think those are kinds of missing information for me that I see. The cu- cu- cultural monitor on site is, is something I think is super important. I think including decommissioning um plans and future mitigation, facility mitigation plans are important. Um, the process for community engagement and allowing our community and cultural practitioners to weigh in on some of this information that is provided. Um, updates on the water table levels and the data of actual factual reports of um measurements and updated, which I didn't see in the um report. Um, also plans for debris removal, methods and location of that dump site. So, so all these things by itself not seem like on big deal. But when you put them all together in one project, even where are you gonna remove the debris to someplace else, cumulative impact? Where are you going to, um, how does the method or mitigation of addressing the water table or mitigation for sea level rise happen in the next five, ten years, cumulative impact? Um, the fact that because it's an exempted viewed and exemption by the department, there was not letters of concern from adjacent businesses who would have had significant cumulative impact conversation, maybe if we had been able to see them or, or um view what their concerns were. So I think when we throw around the idea, even in our rules of what is the cumulative impact, um, there's a lot of, that's when we use our eight realms of decision-making, right? Because cumulative is not just linear, it's what are all the realms of where we live and exist from poor to poor? What, what does that look like? And how is that cumulatively affecting every part of our life? Not just social, not just political, but, but all those things. And, and um for that reason, I, I feel very strongly about this and I assume that this commission in the coming years will see a lot of utility projects that um will warrant the same kind of concern and scrutiny. So it's not just subject to you. Um, I also wanna say that the state and federal government, what we've seen in this commission is a lot of rules designed to exempt utilities because they're for public benefit. And I think I can see the advantage of that, but I also, um, feel that as we are trying to mitigate the changes in our environmental um state and the integrity of how we build and plan further. Those kinds of things can only be enhanced. The benefit of those things can only be enhanced and complemented when commissions like us on the lowest level do its due diligence to ensure that the people of this Aina and the Aina who cannot speak for itself have the boldness to make the moves that we need to move and ask the questions, even if some people think it's silly or it's unfair. And I think that's what this commission is great at doing and, and I stand behind that decision. So, um, any other commissioners have any other questions or comments? Commissioner Hirata.
Aloha, uh Mahalo Chair. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment, um, uh so the State of Hawaii Department of Transportation, I know that you guys looking at the packet, you guys did you guys' consultation back in twenty twenty-three. But in January of twenty twenty-four, a position was created with D O T specifically to help with the natural and cultural resources. Um, the previous The previous Deputy Director for D L N R Laura Kaakawa went over to DOT, and her specific kuliana is to work within the Department of Transportation to give consultations so that they can have this section under them. So that would be like a really good area for you folks to go get that type of real good consultation processes. She's gonna know exactly who the players are and put you folks in contact in different areas. But her position was completely created because the Department of Transportation was sued. And out of the lawsuit, the settlement came that they had to create a new position specifically to address any type of projects that cross over DOT highways in Hawaii and make sure that the cultural part is always and environmental is always in there, not just somebody sitting in an office is making the I guess, giving consultation or whatever you guys do. I don't know what it's called. But anyway, yeah, so I just wanted to make that. Just that little comment. So thank you.
Mahalo. Anybody else? Okay, the motion is on the floor to not exempt the project. All in favor, raise your right hand. I cannot see Commissioner Albino, Kaahenui, or Bisho Jorio. Are they still on? Hang on, guys.
Yeah, I'm here.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Kaahenui.
Okay, I'm sorry. I cannot see you guys on the screen. So let's just do this. I'm gonna do a roll call. Commissioner John Russell Pfeiffer.
Hi.
Commissioner Shannon Kaahenui.
Hi.
Commissioner Kail Malani Hirata.
Hi.
Commissioner Debbie Kelly.
Hi.
Is Commissioner Bisho Jorio still on?
I don't see her, Chair.
Commissioner Luella Albino.
She just got on, so I don't know if she heard that you were making the decision.
Auntie, we're taking a roll call vote on the on the not exempting, and we're waiting for your vote.
Okay. I also am not in favor of exempting this project.
Okay, hang on. Okay, and then my vote is aye. So, oh, Keala Maupono?
Aye.
Okay, so the vote is unanimous at seven, seven ayes and no no one against from the commissioners present. I think we lost Commissioner Bisho Jorio. Okay. Okay, so motion passes. Sibyl. Not, Sibyl, are you there?
To your question, yes.
Yes. Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Based on the commissioners' comments, I do have a list of eleven things that I think would be helpful. One is a cultural monitor on site, to be specific, a cultural monitor. Number two, that consultation includes the Maui County Archaeologists and Department of O E V resources. Three, include a Molokai decommissioning plan for the project. Four, that due diligence be done to contact on-island resources to include archaeologists and cultural practitioners. Five, that there be a process for community engagement and Molokai community input into the project and any future projects associated with this project. Six, to include updated data on water table levels with factual data. Seven, include a plan for debris removal to include location of disposal. Eight, the method of mitigation for addressing rise in in water table and other climate change and climate adaptation mitigation efforts. Nine, include Exhibit A consultation letters. Ten, letters from adjacent, well, that's the same thing, sorry. And then, yeah, sorry, that's it. Any other commissioners that have anything included? I tried to list down all the things you guys said, but. Oh, and then the last one would be for the applicant to clarify how and how this project would or could or is anticipated to connect to larger projects, specifically underwater sea cable broadband communication. And then, I think the last thing was, when that larger connection is done, that they commit to informing the community and having community engagement on the proposed project to include on-island cultural practitioners and historians to support and eliminate negative cumulative impacts to the larger project. If any commissioners have anything else that they wanna include in this? Some of the suggestions too, because our brother from Hawaii Intel asked, I think would be good to have community engagement in the method of like community information sessions on island to give maximum benefit for our kupuna and those less inclined to attend online. But I think a couple of different methods of community information sessions at bite-sized pieces that people can understand. It's a real big deal to us to engage with the cultural practitioners and make sure that when you are engaging with the Ahamoku, that you engage on the right island. And so the Ahamoku that was engaged probably didn't answer because in our culture, it's kind of mahaoi to go give advice on somebody else's place. And so I assumed that's why Uncle Keamoku did not give a comment. So it would probably be good to do that. And then Munakia and Haraga, I noticed that you have secured a number of contracts for consultation and being the consultant in projects. And I think that the recommendations we make in here as far as like community engagement and utilizing on-island resources and being sensitive to the vast and unreal amounts of expertise we have about our own island and our own history is would be a great benefit to you if you use that kind of protocol when doing business on Molokai. Okay, commissioners, anything else? Okay?
Chair, I just have one more, Chair.
Yes, yes.
So the community engagement input and the methods of information sessions, I know Commissioner Kelly spoke to businesses within that area. Would that be something separate or would that be included in the community engagement?
I think Commissioner Kelly was alluding to the consultation letters that you was talking about, like including that, but also including the five-mile radius or whatever, especially like the or the radius of whatever is the people affected in the area from the project. And I think that was more like written concerns or letters or any type of concerns that those business had. I think separate from the community engagement, I was more trying to just maybe educate the applicant that that, and and not so much the applicant, but the consultant, that as I see, you guys have quite a bit of projects that you have gotten on Molokai that it probably would just be great benefit to you and us to do our job if the community rallied and supported around you because there was adequate engagement and and respect for our expert knowledge of our own island prior to coming before a body like this or prior to like engaging in a project going forward. And that's just me trying to be helpful. So anything else, Sibyl?
Thank you.
Okay. Seeing nothing else, we'll move on to director's report, agenda items for future meeting. There are no applications or reports generated by the Planning Commission for October ninth. So Anna or whoever's staff, agenda items for future meetings?
Hello, Chair. Thank you. This is Anna here for the Department of Planning. We do anticipate a demolition exemption request coming to you folks for next meeting. So no presentations are anticipated at this time, and one exemption is anticipated.
Okay, mahalo for that. And then, let's see. Our next regular scheduled meeting is October twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. I would like commissioners to take a look at Chantel sent the attachment for the calendar of our meetings for the year twenty twenty-five. So take a look at that so that we can also discuss and bring any questions up that you guys might have. Other than that, if we have nothing left from the staff or from commissioners? Okay. Mahalo to our community, to our staff, to Andrew, who we just adore, and Anna and Sibyl and Chantel. Mahalo for your hard work. We really appreciate this. And mahalo to the presentation that was made. I think that was super helpful. We will entertain more presentations to build capacity within our community and our commission. Thank you, commissioners, for your time. Mahalo. This meeting is adjourned.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.
Mahalo.